We just thought that it all done. The foxes.
Oh, I'm sure that they will be still be dominating.
I have seen it as well.
There's very few of them.
Yeah, they're always worried about number at the bottom of line. But I think it could be enough.
Who I OD.
Part eight.
Yeah.
Productive, but also.
Your name?
Maybe that's fine.
Are you just showing your?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there.
Sorry, just to round off.
Joel Brilliant.
Uh, Joel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Dean Serna. Hi, so.
Yeah, ah, okay.
Dixon Jombe. Nigga Jombe.
It's really sort of later in the year comes and uh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, projector here.
I got your municipal update. That's fabulous. I didn't, I didn't know that you just got.
Projector. Yeah, projector.
Oh, except that.
I thought the money you owed was like seven.
Somebody definitely did. I'm not sure what's expected.
This is what we get. Well, take it.
And they only wanted to pay three.
I am much of that. I think they really did owe you about seven, but.
Thank you.
But take the three. Unfortunately. But I think that's great. Yep. And. That man from one song. Okaying over time. Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board Meeting of September 24th. My name is Roberta Mayer. I am the Chair of the Neighborhood Board, and I would like the Board Members to introduce themselves to you, starting with my far right. Herb, would you get us started?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Herb Schreiner, Sub District Six, which is Kamiloiki Valley.
My name is Jean Tierney. I'm Sub District Eight.
Joseph Pugh, Kalamah Valley, Sub District Seven.
Joel Brilliant. Not a district.
At Large.
At Large.
Greg Knutson, At Large.
Elsasilbokat, Sub District One.
Sam Wolf, Sub District Four, the Haione Condo Towers.
Peach Alton, Sub District Eleven, Portlock Road and Manalua Triangle, Kokokai.
Lisa Bishop, At Large. We also have one or two Board Members online. Could you please introduce yourselves? Dixon, Elijah.
Hi, this is Dixon Park. I'm At Large.
Dixon, you need to turn your camera on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Do that.
Anybody else online?
Good evening, Elijah Lee, Sub District Five.
Elijah. And who else?
Chelsea Chay. At Large.
All right, Chelsea.
Hi, it's Holly Lyons, Koapa Isle.
Okay. All right, I believe I have four Board Members online: Chelsea, Dixon, Holly, and Elijah. Did I miss anybody? All right, everybody's here. We're waiting for Elizabeth, and she will probably be stepping in in just a few minutes. All right, we're gonna be going on with our Board Agenda. Let me first say that I received a text late this afternoon that our presenter for our first presentation on the update on Cocoa Crater Stables is ill and will not be able to attend tonight. So I'm going to be rescheduling that presentation for our October meeting. So hopefully, our meeting may be a little early tonight. Uh, starting with our status reports, is the Honolulu Fire Department present? Are they online? All right, moving on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, aloha, Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with um HPD. These are our stats for August as compared to um the previous month. Okay, let's see, motor vehicle thefts were two as compared to zero. Burglaries were one as compared to zero. Thefts in general were seventeen as compared to ten. And UEMVs were sixteen as compared to seven. The total calls of service of six thousand five hundred and fifty-three for the district. Where the statistical information can be found in HonoluluPD.org. And our safety tip for the month um is uh just a reminder about flash floods. Flash floods can be um very dangerous and come on very, very quickly, so the same advisory systems, there's watches, warnings, and the very lowest is um advisories, yeah. So um the warning is the one from warnings is where we need to to really take notice. And then if you do see uh a flash flood coming down and you don't know whether you can cross it um any any standing water, don't. Because it 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 can, it can be very deceiving, yeah. So that's our safety tip for the month.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Are there questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Any questions from the audience or online? Okay, there are none. Thank you so much for coming and joining us and for providing your report.
Yeah, take care. See you next month.
Thank you. Uh, Board of Water Supply, Iris. Thanks for joining us, Iris.
Nice to be here in person. I just, I forgot my my things. All I have is my general announcement. I don't know if there was main breaks last month, so sorry about that. But I pass on to the Board Members, and I have a few extra. On Saturday, September twenty-eighth, that's this Saturday, we're having, imagine a day without water. So it's from ten AM to two PM at the Kapolei Regional Park. So there's gonna be more than fifteen city and state agencies and some community groups. So there's gonna be booths with interactive activities. There's a Zer escape craft. Um, and there's also rain barrel workshops. And ono food, desserts, and snacks are gonna be for sale. And there's also gonna be the succulent mini workshop and more. So the flyer has the information, and on the back also has an event map. So if there's any questions that I can.
Questions for the Board of Water Supply? I do have a question, Iris. Um, over this past weekend, there have been several showings of the um threat of hurricanes to our island state. And my question is, in the event of a disaster, um, is the Board of Water Supply able to continue to make water available? Or do they rely on electricity for pumps to be working?
So we do rely on electricity for pumps, but we do have, we are prepared for hurricanes or any emergencies or blackouts. So we do have um emergency generators. Some are stationary at the facility, and we do have, I forget how many, but um we do have roving ones where we can bring it to the stations that need um need the the um, need the power. And we do uh fill the reservoirs and top it off if we do know something is coming. So we do our best to get prepared beforehand. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I got a quick one.
Yes, go ahead, Herb.
Imagine a day without water. Are you guys following Hiko's lead?
No comment. Thank you. Okay, Iris, thank you so much for your report. Thanks for joining us. Um, by the way, I forgot to introduce two people that help make our meetings run smoothly. Um, Jordan Jenkins is our videographer, and Spencer Johnson is filling in tonight as our Neighborhood Assistant. Uh, Jeffrey Jones is on vacation this month. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Uh, Kaiser Complex Schools. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, this is a. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Sorry, this is Chris Lee. Hey, um, I just wanted to ask for your indulgence if it'd be possible to go earlier. I actually have to hop on a plane and be up at four AM tomorrow, and I haven't even started packing yet. But did I have one thing to share, which was just kind of urgent, about invasive species in the, now in the Hawaii Kai area?
Okay, uh Senator Lee, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much.
Mr. Gu will be happy to uh delay his presentation. Go ahead, Senator.
Sorry for the the interference. Uh, my apologies. Yeah, I'm actually flying to Iowa for a work thing tomorrow, but um you know, there's, there's a couple things happening, uh but in particular, uh everything else can wait except for this one, which I'll just touch on briefly. In Waianalo, over the last uh two years or so, maybe a little bit longer than that, as folks probably know, there were a number of um koki frogs that had been discovered, which came in um probably through one of the uh nurseries, which got out into the the forest and the watershed there. Um, basically, it was contained to one small area in the back of kind of uh a tiny little valley in between two ridges. Um, unfortunately, despite attempts uh to try and keep that contained with uh Department of Ag and DLNR and other partners who've been working uh in the community, um, it's since spread, and there's just not the resources available to maintain that along with everything else that's going on in the rest of the island with little fire ants and coconut rhinoceros beetle and all the other invasives. So um we just had a meeting on the Waianalo side about a week ago with all the different stakeholders. And uh they're taking some fairly aggressive action to try and uh bring in citric acid and other things to try and deal with the spreading invasives, but at this point, it's clear uh koki frogs have um gone all the way up the the cliffside of the Koalau and are now over on the Hawaii Kai side of the watershed, in the upper watershed. So I bring that up now because um, you know, it's sort of a scramble on the other side to try and uh get the community even more engaged, so we can literally go in and try and extract as possible, but um that time may come uh relatively soon for the um upper watershed on this side, because obviously, it's all downhill from here, so to speak. And if we're gonna stop uh this stuff, it's, it's kind of now or never. So there may come a time in the next uh couple of months where we ask for folks who are interested in volunteering and others to uh work together with the Invasive Species Council and Department of Ag and others to try and uh stem the tide. Um, this coming year, uh there's good news, I should say, um which is that uh a bunch of us just got back from New Zealand, where we went and met with their folks who are dealing with similar issues in biosecurity, and they have a many decades-long, well-established um program, which basically uh scans and vets everything coming into state to prevent this kind of thing from happening. And so all cargo, all mail, all boxes, everything gets scanned, all people coming in through the airports get scanned, all containers through ports, et cetera. So we've been in um conversations about how we can replicate some of those best practices in Hawaii going forward. But the other piece of the puzzle that um they really have down well is um a response to something that's discovered, like in this case, if we had little fire ant discovered, or you know, whatever else, koki frog. And when uh in the last two years, even one fruit fly was detected in uh Auckland, um, they have protocols in place where within six hours, over two hundred people are dispatched to the area. Commerce through the area is shut down, um and everything is all hands on deck, in almost like a terrorist-like response to deal with a threat. And they have protocols in place to compensate businesses for lost revenue and all those kinds of things, but um it's effective. And so that's the discussion we're starting to have now, because obviously, we're failing to contain um all the invasives that are out there that are, you know, devastating palm trees and watersheds and everything else. Uh, there's just not the resources right now, so we're gonna try and really vamp it, or ramp that up, and see what we can put in place for the future to stop this stuff from coming into the state in the first place. So there is hope there. Uh, but let me stop there. I just wanted to put that issue out there because it is obviously urgent and something that we're gonna start paying attention to, and maybe um in the next uh meeting or next month or something, we can bring in uh our departments who are working on the issue to, I think, do a briefing that's much more in-depth than I'm capable of um giving right at the moment. So if that's of interest, I'm happy to follow up on that. But thank you for the indulgence again to take me out of order.
Uh, thank you. Are there any questions for Senator Lee? Greg?
Yeah, Senator Lee, I was just wondering if um, you know, do you identify the source? Was it on the Waianalo side and it's coming up over the hill? Uh, and at what point is it um as it flows downhill, is it going into Kuyuo, uh Waikai proper, Kama Valley? And any more detailed information on where it might be intruding?
Yeah, so it is coming uh from everything that can be seen. It is coming from the Waianalo side, uh from the earlier infestation, which kind of has spread up and over the ridge. Um, it's, I I'm not an expert on the the technical sense on this, so I don't know how fast it would spread on this side. Uh, although I think it's pretty clear there's one sort of established pocket already up uh near the top of the ridge. Um, we can get the folks out here who can comment on that probably, as I'd mentioned, and I'm sure they can give kind of a a much better description or map or um, you know, that sort of thing.
Elizabeth?
Hey, Senator, I was gonna mention that um Manalua Fish Pond Heritage Center and Livable Hawaii Kai Hui got a small grant from the Department of Agriculture for community outreach. And we're just going through some paperwork right now, so um we're gonna be going out there into the community to start educating, and we're gonna be working with the CRB Response Team on this. Um, so thank you very much for mentioning it, and just to the larger community. Uh, we're anticipating probably in a month, we'll start gearing up. It doesn't mean treatment to trees, which we're concerned about, because we have in um this east Honolulu area, at least two areas that have very exceptional coconut groves, one at the Fish Pond Heritage Center and then one over at Havae Heao. So um, we've had uh some specialists come out and look, and we're starting to talk about treatments, but it's extremely expensive. So um, but that's how far we got so far. Mahalo.
No, that's, that's awesome. Uh, yeah, I mean, the more education, all this stuff, obviously, there's more species than one out there, uh the better.
Senator, you were talking about more than the rhinoceros beetle. Are you also going to be addressing the little fire ants?
Uh, yeah, obviously, that's uh an ongoing thing. I I know there was just a um big effort on the, around the corner uh in Kailua and Waianalo, where uh, for example, the whole Lani Gai community was um kind of coordinated and was able to wipe out most of the LFA infestations in that area. There's still like a few left. Um, but you know, really has long-term treatment and all that. Uh, on this side, uh you know, it's no different. There's still exposure. Excuse me. So um i- in the context of all these different invasives being dealt with and having resources put into it, I, you know, I think the intent is to um, at least going forward, you know, triage what we can immediately for the stuff like koki up on the ridge and um CRB and and LFA and neighborhoods and so forth. Uh, but in the long run, make sure there's resources and a framework in place to stop this stuff from coming in, and then meaningfully try and manage what's here already, uh if not wipe it out, if that's, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator, for your report, and good luck getting your packing done before tomorrow.
No, thank you again.
Okay, all right, we're back on a schedule and welcoming uh Principal Gu of Haha Ioni Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. Gu.
Aloha, and thank you for having me. Just love presenting about the Kaiser Complex of schools, because we have so many great things going on, and we just like to connect with the community and be a partner to the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board. And so, first of all, our Kaiser Complex of schools strives to create a future, uh create future world leaders that will impact the global community. And as you've heard, we have many different issues in our community, like invasive species. And we have the answer, and that's our students, who will come in and we will um, they will be our next uh leaders to solve or resolve these problems in our world. We do try to create a better and more peaceful world, and through that, um we address many of these issues. All right, so one way we can do that is that we can connect with the community. Uh, it's so great to have um public school students who grow up in the community and then attend the same school, and they are just um part of that, and um you you build this strong heart in these kids. All right, so some of the events coming, coming up, I'd like to talk about is Spirit Week at Kaiser High School, and that's gonna be October fourteenth to nineteenth. There's a parade on the seventeenth, and then a football game against Waialua on the eighteenth, and a dance on the nineteenth. Uh, just wanted to remind you about some other things going on. Feral chickens. Contract is ended for the removal, but um please uh do not feed any chickens or released chickens. And then um, just moving down the list, Kaiser Football is just exciting football, so please come out and check out the games, and I'll list it down in the minutes. Uh, also four National Merit semifinalists. Um, we're the only public school in the Honolulu District to have uh these nominees for our semifinalists, and that is Marcus Cho, Rachel Hamasaki, Caitlin Toma, and Peter Vasen. Congratulations to these wonderful students from Kaiser High School. And remember, Paul Ballas reported a couple of months ago about the homecoming parade. That'll be October sixteenth, and it'll be from five thirty to six thirty. They got full approval, and they'll begin at Coco Head District Park, so you can go up there and join them. Uh, moving on right down the list, um I just wanna skip to a couple of big events. This Friday is the Fam Jam at New Valley Middle School, so check it out from five to eight. There're gonna be food trucks and entertainment. Also, on October twenty-fifth will be Haione's Harvest Fest, so there'll be a haunted house uh with games and food. Also on the same night, busy night, Kamiloiki Elementary School will have their Kiki Carnival. All right, now for the biggest uh news so far, we just got um a nominee. Two, two schools were named National Blue Ribbon Schools, which is one of the most prestigious awards in our nation. And so the first school is Milalani Ike Elementary School, so congratulations to them. And the next one is our own Kaiser Complex School, Coco Head Elementary School. And they're just pretty amazing under the former leadership of Principal Shitaoka and current leadership of Kevin Diaz. Uh, they have just taken the school to new heights. They probably have one of the highest proficiency rates at eighty-five percent in English Language Arts, so pretty commendable. And and they've been um a school of excellence for many years. The last time they won Blue Ribbon was in twenty-eleven, so this is the second time. Just um thirteen years, so congratulations to them.
Elizabeth? I noticed Haione is gonna have a haunted house. So I have someone who wants to donate some of those large characters. Who would they call? They called the front office, but the front office said it was Haione PTSA, and they didn't get any farther than sending an email through the website.
Okay, I'll definitely look for that, and I'll respond personally to them. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you so much for uh giving us all those donations, and I'll go to a good cause for students and also raise some money for PTSA. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Greg?
Introduce to you the great news about Coco Head Elementary. I noticed a banner on the wall back there that Haione was a Blue Ribbon School as well, what, two thousand and fourteen? So, that's great. It is a major national distinction, so.
Yeah. Thank you, yeah. Congratulations to them.
I have a, um, I need to understand this. On the front page, you have the parade on Thursday, October seventeenth, and on the back, you have it Wednesday, the sixteenth.
I think that was a mistake for the seventeenth. It is the sixteenth, which is a Wednesday. So thank you for that correction.
Any questions from the audience or people online? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gu, for joining us.
All right, well, I'll have to have.
It's always a pleasure. Thank you. Next on our agenda are community announcements. Are there members of the Board or the audience who would like to share information with the community? Elizabeth?
I wanted to let everybody know that uh, let's see, November sixteenth and seventeenth, we'll have two days of educational hikes on Ka'ivi Malka. And the RSVP um website is gonna be opening soon, and it would be really nice if you're interested to come on out and learn about those lands that the community helped protect. I would ask at this time that you just simply send an email to LHK, LHKH.org, LHKH.org. And then the subject just put Ka'ivi hiking. Thanks very much. And it's, it's all free.
Other community announcements. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Garrison. I own Hawaii Running Lab. I was here last month introducing our brand-new event, the Hawaii Kai Mile. Uh, we had no permitting at that point, no website. I wanted to come by and touch base. Permits are full steam ahead. Our website is up to register. Uh, we already have people coming in. At the behest of the Board, we went and bought HawaiiKaiMile.com, so it's no longer a really long race roster with a whole bunch of numbers. So thank you for the feedback. Uh, you can register at HawaiiKai.com. Our age group awards start at eight and under. So we're really trying to get a lot of the elementary school kids and junior high kids involved, and uh it's November second, seven AM. We're gonna go from the skate park in um Kamiloiki and head right down to Kaiser High School and park it up there. So, and I left some of the flyers here, in case anybody wants to register or get more information. It takes you right to the website, and those are gonna be right over there. Uh, any questions I can answer before I get back to put my kids to bed?
Questions for Michael Garrison? No questions, Michael. Good luck.
Easy. Thank you so much. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? I do have one announcement. Uh, the Hawaii Kai Holiday Parade is scheduled for November thirty of this year. And uh I would like to ask the Board Members if you are interested in participating as an organization. Uh, if we do so, it would, we would need to, I think, have more than half of the group. And also, besides walking in the mile and a half parade, uh we would also need to commit to manning a booth at the Coco, um excuse me, at the uh Coco Marina Shopping Center. So any comments? Any idea whether or not you'd be interested? No takers?
I, I would be interested. This is, this is Chelsea Chay.
Hello, Chelsea. Thank you. We have one Board Member interested. And. All right, we have another volunteer, Joel. All right, if that's above all the interests, then um we are not going to be able to participate as an organization this year. So think about it, maybe next year, if um people are gonna be in town and available. I know that everybody has a busy schedule, and that is a holiday weekend, so um not everybody might be able to make it, but think about it for the future. Any other community announcements? All right, are there any public-generated issues that the com- that the community would like to bring to our attention, that is not on our agenda, but may be on a future agenda if the Board so chooses? No public-generated issues. All right, thank you. Then we're gonna go into our presentations, and as I had indicated early in the meeting, our first presentation is not gonna be um presented tonight because of illness. So that will be rescheduled. This is on Cocoa Crater Stables. That will be rescheduled for October. So is Ethan Pearson Pomerantz available for our Oahu Search and Rescue OSAR presentation? Welcome, Ethan. I'm sorry that uh you're having some difficulty getting up.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me. I appreciate the invite to be here. My name's Ethan Pearson Pomerantz. I'm part of Oahu Search and Rescue. We're a volunteer, all-volunteer, five oh one C three nonprofit here on the island. We've been around for about ten years now. Um, we are your neighbors. We lease land up in Kamiloiki Valley. Um, it's not a great picture of it.
It's not a great picture of it. I apologize, but we have about 70 acres back behind the nursery that is at least to us from a property ownership group. And we use that for a combination of uh, training, education events and things like that. So we are definitely uh, in the area when we're out here and um, have found it to be a, a great area to be in for us. Little bit about Oahu Search and Rescue. Sorry, let me see if I can balance this better. There we go. Oh, that's great. Thank you so much. As I said, we are a all volunteer nonprofit. On the island here, Honolulu Fire Department has first crack at any sort of missing person in the wilderness. Um, in general, they'll search for about 72 hours and after that point in time, they stop searching. Uh, we come in and fill in the gap after that at the request of the family or friends. And um, we sort of formed out of a bunch of missing person cases in uh, 2014 and 2015. And we are about 50 members strong now. The top right hand corner uh, is our, from last year, I guess, uh, about a year ago. So we're, we're up to a good team size. Interestingly enough, the bottom left picture is how we started. So we've come a long ways. Um, what we provide is search resources for the community. So if somebody's missing and the fire department has either finished their search. It's not moving on. I guess my connection isn't so slow. That's okay. Um, so if fire department's finished the search and, and the person remains missing, uh, we will deploy teams and search uh, wilderness areas. We don't necessarily do urban. Um, we have a little bit in the past as requested by the police, but not very much. Um, we provide high angle search skills primarily because what happens is when somebody is missing, the family asks for help and volunteers to show up. The communities are great about this sort of thing. But uh, here we go, moved on finally. Um, the communities that come out and search don't necessarily have the skill set to repel cliffs and search high angle areas. And as you well know, our terrain here is very steep. So uh, that's where we primarily focus, um, searching vertical faces. Uh, we also will search heavy brush and other fun areas like that, that sometimes can be difficult to get into. Because we are not affiliated with the fire department or the police, uh, we make our own decision as a board, whether our internal board, whether we're going to go out and search. Uh, we don't necessarily search every case that comes to us because we do not do criminal things. Uh, we don't search in criminal cases. Uh, and unfortunately, many searches turn into that. So uh, we are a little bit limited in that. Hoping these slide forward here, but they don't seem to be. That's okay. Uh, we do also go to other islands. We've gone to Molokai, we've gone to Kauai, we've gone to Big Island, we've gone to Maui to assist uh, teams and uh, police and fire on those uh, communities as well. The other half of what we do, and actually it's probably more of our mission than the searches because we don't do a lot of the searches, is education. Um, preventative search and rescue, PSAR. Uh, if we can teach somebody how to be safe in the woods and not get lost in the first place or have the required items with them. Hopefully we don't have to go out and find them or help them out. So we will get with um, all kinds of different groups. Uh, we've done a bunch of stuff with the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, various church groups. We've done things with fitness boot camps. Um, we've just done a bunch of the um, disaster preparedness fairs. I think they were just in um, Leeward, I think, was this past week. There's a North Shore one coming up. I believe there's one out there as well. So we'll set up a booth and talk about hiking safety, things you should always have with you when you go out in the woods. Um, the fire department's using an acronym called STOP and we've started teaching that as well. So if you do get lost, you uh, sit, think, observe and plan. And that's the steps you'll take before you start running through the woods panicking that you're lost and that leads to a much better outcome. Uh, let's see, I think I have some good pictures somewhere here if we get to them about teaching. Uh, mostly we do teach younger groups. Uh, as you can see from these pictures, that's I think, uh, the Girl Scouts in the middle, on the right there in the middle. I'm not sure what the group was on the left. But uh, we do that and we're happy to come out and talk to pretty much any group. So if you have a group in your community, uh, I know I've talked to Elizabeth about this, about the, the lands up on uh, Malka, coming out there and doing some hiking safety education. Uh, we sort of are uh, gung ho to do that sort of thing. And uh, if you ever to come across somebody who's missing, it's a family member or a friend or something like that, and you're not getting the progress you need once the fire department's completed their search at 72 hours, we are certainly able to take a look at that as well. Um, specifically the reason why I'm coming out tonight to talk to you, uh, Michael beat me to the punch about running here. Um, we have our yearly fundraiser that we're holding on the property in Hawaii Kai, uh, October 26th. Um, so I'm hoping we don't make too much noise at 7:30 in the morning. We're going to do our best, but uh, the race starts at 8:30. We're expecting about 70 people maybe. So uh, the property is that green fenced gate that's at uh, Hawaii Kai Drive and Kamila Street. And the road runs back there and up the hill. Um, it's a beautiful, beautiful area back there. I know many from the community do hike back there. Um, I'm always hesitant to say this, but um, it is not our land to stop people from trespassing on. I know people do use it quite a bit. Uh, but the race will be back there and if you're interested in checking out that land, uh, definitely sign up. Um, I can leave. Can I put in the minutes after the address? Is that the website address to sign up? Is that the easiest way? Okay, I can do that. Um, but also just so you're aware, if anybody's living on that backside there, uh, there's two streets that face the driveway. Um, we will make every effort to be quiet in there, but you will see an influx of people on October 26th in the morning. Uh, the plan is to have parking on the other side of the street going up the hill where there's not a whole lot of houses. We'll try and minimize the impact of parking. And again, it shouldn't be more than 60 or 70 people, I think. Um, but what, I'm trying to think which street that is that goes over the gap back onto the backside of uh, Coco Crater in front of the school. Is it Hawaii Kai Drive still on that side of the street? Okay. Yeah, so we're, we're planning to park people on Hawaii Kai Drive. So it's sort of in front of the school there. So it's a little bit quieter and not inconveniencing. But yeah, that's our plan and um, we're really looking forward to having the race there. As I said, it's beautiful land back there and, and be able to get people out there and see it. Um, there's a 5K option and then there's, I believe it's a 4K more stroller friendly run uh, along the actual dirt road that goes back up the hill. And both of them are absolutely gorgeous. But uh, yeah, happy to take any questions about OSAR in general or uh, about the race we're having.
All right, questions for um, our presenter, Elizabeth, and then Paige? I was thinking if you could say the email or the website address, it might
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if anyone wants to write down, it's uh, www dot Oahu Sar dot org slash race.
And how much is it?
I believe it's $35 and you get a very nice t-shirt that's going to have that stupendous logo that is not a scuba diver. I promise that's not a scuba diver running across the island. They're wearing a backpack. Um, on that and uh, there's prizes. It is also a Halloween themed run. So if you want to run it in costume, please do. And uh, we do have a prize for best costume. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a question about OSAR. Do you guys strictly do uh, mountain rescues? Or do you, uh, not rescues, but uh, mount, like missing people in mountains or do you do like, like missing person searches, like?
More urban.
Well, yeah, more urban or something like that. Or do you strictly do stick to the mountain terrains?
Mountain search and rescue is a technical qualification of ropes and elevation and avalanche and things like that. Obviously, we don't have snow here for the avalanche end of it. But um, we focus on wilderness. So here that turns into mountains just because of the terrain. Um, there's also a lot of interface areas. Uh, just, you know, even on the street here, there's many places that there's a house here and a house here, but there's a vacant spot between them. They could very well be wilderness, 15, 20 feet from the road. So we definitely do a combination of that. What we don't necessarily do, although we would certainly help, is if a child went missing in Kakaako or something like that, we wouldn't, that wouldn't be our go-to, although we would certainly help out if asked.
And do you get called um, strictly from the, from the public or does HPD or HFD even call? Will they call you or?
We are not a recognized agency or organization per them. It's something that we're working on. Uh, we do have a good working relationship with DLNR. And uh, we're, we're excited about that. I think, I would imagine that the fire department and police know who we are. We see them. Um, we've done a couple of cold cases that have been years down the road or months down the road and we've found remains and called the police in and they've been really great about working with us to get that process going before they take over. I, I tell everybody, we are not the, the first response agency. If something happens, you call 911 and they, they'll handle it. But if nothing's happening days on into the search, then we certainly can. Um, and in fact, we've come in earlier now. Uh, the, the fire department's been good about it in a couple of searches recently where the family asked if it was okay if we came in early and we did, along with the huge volunteer contingent that came out as well. Yeah, certainly.
Greg?
Your explanation that you just gave kind of answered some of my questions, but I still wonder if there's any way that you could fit in sort of follow up to Paige. I know out here we're thinking of Coco Crater all the time and how the fire department stages these, I think sometimes not always necessary overreactions. Where 17 people arrive, helicopter, I mean, it's thousands of dollars. Where I've witnessed one um, close to the blowhole, but up on Coco Crater where they were staging there and calling in the helicopter. And in the meantime, I just walked up in street clothes, street shoes. I was at the same level as these people who had just basically gotten tired. They could have gotten down. So, but I'm wondering, is your organization able just to send a few people up and help them down?
We certainly have the capability. Um, I think the response times from the fire department are very quick and in cases where they, they're needed there right away because it's an emergency. And it's hard to tell from a phone call sometimes. So I understand why they send everything they've got because they've got to, they've got to get that first response in solidly. And if some, you know, a call comes in, we're tired. You don't know if it's tired because they're tired or because they're having a heart attack or something like that. So I understand why they do it, but we certainly would like to at some point in time alleviate some of that stress and burden on them. But right now, we really focus on the search side and leave the rescue for them. Although we do train, I mean, you'll see us out all the time, training high angle rescue and stuff like that. But our focus is more on the extended search just because it's such a manpower drain uh, for the agencies.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ethan, how long has this organization been around?
Uh, we're coming up on 10 years.
10 years?
2015 was our start.
Okay. And so how do you um, uh, publicize your services? Since you're, the public can access services, how do you publicize that you're available and what you do?
It's mostly word of mouth and organizations that we've worked with in the past, telling other people and telling other people. We do a lot of these safety uh, booths, events at um, uh, preparedness fairs and things like that, talking to neighborhood boards just like this. Um, I, I don't keep super good track on social media, but invariably on the groups that spring up around missing persons or stolen stuff Hawaii or whatever the group of the day is, somebody will recommend us pretty quickly in the conversation. Um, so I feel like we're definitely known. Uh, we're very hesitant to reach out actively to a family and say, hey, by the way, we're available because we don't, we're not quite comfortable doing that at this point, but there are cases where we've certainly done that.
Elizabeth? Earlier you had said the location was Kamilaiki Valley. Um, I wanted to clarify. It's Kamila Nui Valley and we all know how much we all love Kamila Nui Valley. So it's just, I'm just so delighted that you're in there and that you're utilizing the land and it's um, you're doing what you're doing. So thank you very much.
Okay, so it's one, I always get that confused. I apologize.
No problem.
Behind the nurseries.
Joel?
Hi, thanks for coming and I applaud your organization for what it does. Very impressive. Um, and with that, are you needing any volunteers to help out on your race?
Um, I'm not sure. I, I have, it's funny because I tell everybody on the team, you need to be here for this event and I'm going to be off island video event. So I have been directly involved with the organization at this point. Uh, in the past, we have not taken outside volunteers because of insurance issues. Uh, we rented by our insurance agent and they were like, no, don't do that. Um, I can check and I can get back in touch through the board here and let you know if um, it would be great to have people in the community there if we can do it, but I got to double check on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Elsa?
So I'm looking at the website and it actually has the wrong valley listed.
Does, does it have uh, Iki on there as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'll update that.
Okay.
All right. Well, Ethan, thank, uh, any questions online? I don't see any. Okay, so uh, Ethan, thank you very much for coming and sharing what your organization does. I think uh, that it's admirable efforts. So yes, I think you need to make yourselves even better known. All right, our next presentation is on small business and nonprofit programs overview. Our presenter is Sophia Summers. She is an energy advisor with Hawaii Energy. Welcome, Sophia.
Hello. Thank you all for having me. Thank you, Roberta. I'm just gonna share my screen here.
I take it you're trying to um, share your screen?
I am. Should pop up in just a moment. Not sure it's keeping up with where my slide is. It's only on my Safari.
Um, Spencer, are you able to assist her?
Thank you. All right. Thank you for waiting. Uh, my name is Sophia Summers. I'm an energy advisor with Hawaii Energy. And before we get started, can I get a show of hands, people who have actually heard of Hawaii Energy and are familiar with what we do? All right, we got a couple of people. Um, so I'm here tonight because I'm actually new to the Hawaii Kai District as a resident. And I just wanted to, you know, introduce myself and see if our programs can better serve this community. We do have some really wonderful programs and I will just start off by saying that Hawaii Energy is different than HECO. Uh, so Hawaii Energy was born about 10 years ago out of the state's energy efficiency portfolio, portfolio goals. Uh, where we want to reach 100% clean energy by 2045 and a majority of that is not actually done in renewables per se, but in energy conservation and efficiency. So that's basically how do you get the exact same result for less work? And uh, we really want to prioritize residents, families, businesses and people who are in the community. So we manage a public benefits fund where every HECO ratepayer pays a fraction of their monthly bill and it goes directly towards this energy efficiency fund that we manage and then we redistribute back to the community. And we do that in a couple of different ways. Uh, our three program pillars here, accessibility and affordability, clean energy technologies and economic development and market transformation. I'm just going to focus on one, which is affordable, affordability and accessibility. Uh, this is basically just trying to include everybody in the transition and get money into the hands of people who need it. We have two primary programs under this pillar. One is our Empower Grant, which applications just opened for this program year as of August 1st. So it's a super great grant. You can get um, 3,000, 4,000, up to $6,000 uh, for energy efficiency equipment upgrades. Uh, for your business, if you're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, um, charitable organization, if you have multifamily housing, condominium, you can do this for um, your common area lighting or you can do it as like a, a restaurant if you need commercial kitchen upgrades. Uh, it is a reimbursement plan. So once the install happens, you would just send us your invoice and we can provide you with a grant based on what tier you're under. Um, you would have to use one of our clean energy allies. It's a fancy word we use for a contractor that we make sure is uh, licensed and insured. And at our second program is Energy Advantage. So has anybody here actually used Energy Advantage or knows somebody who has? It's our more popular program. Uh, it is for small businesses, 501(c)(3) nonprofits, multifamily units. Um, it basically is a node to low cost, free LED light, lighting retrofit. So if you qualify, then you can get your old fluorescents upgraded to new LEDs. And the contractor basically puts the bill and we pay the contractor back. So if you're a tenant, you don't have to worry about that. And it saves a business on average around $3,000 a year. And it's just a really great tool to use if you are a small business. As I mentioned before, these are some of the eligibility requirements. And there's just a few steps listed down below for how to go about And there's just a few steps listed down below for how to go about applying for both our Empower Grant and our Energy Advantage program. Uh, you reach out to us or contractor that's certified with us. We review the scope of work. Um, we give it the green light and you can basically get a project lighting HVAC uh that you've been wanting to get for a really reduced price and. Yeah, we've seen it be really helpful. There's been about 6,500 organizations uh that have benefited from this program since its inception. These numbers are from our last program year, but there's a little bit uh more since we just completed our most recent program year. But in essence, it saved about 9.6 megawatts uh of power from being pulled from the grid. Uh, and again, saving a business about $3,100 a year. And this is where you would go on our website, whyenergy.com/findacontractor. Uh, you say, you know, what you're looking for, which island you're on. If you're trying to do HVAC, lighting, kitchen equipment, whatever it is, you can filter it out. And this is actually the same contractor or same webpage that you'd want to use for both programs to find a contractor. And this is a list of some eligible projects that we incentivize. Solar water heaters, um window film, kitchen demand ventilation control. But I would say our most popular is going to be packaged or split ACs. So if you want one of those nice like Mitsubishi or Daikin split AC systems, this is a really good way to get a lot of your money back in that purchase. Just some more eligibility requirements. Because I'm specifically talking about commercial rate uh schedule Gs. So if you are a small business, and that basically means you use less than 30 kilowatts of power a month. But yeah, if if your facility is under 5,000 square feet, you're 501(c)(3) nonprofit, you will likely qualify because you'll be on a rate schedule G. These are just some examples of what's not eligible. But yeah, if you are interested in applying, we just need a few things. Uh, it takes 10 minutes to fill out a commercial incentive application. Provide your most recent W9 and an itemized quote from a contractor that you've chosen from our vendor directory. And then we can get the ball rolling to get you that money back. Told you I would keep it really short. So that is my presentation and uh I'm available for questions if you have any.
I am going to ask you a few questions first before I open it up. Is it only the small business, is it only for small businesses? Because I can see retrofitting a place like a school, for example, would be saving the power company a whole lot of energy use if all of the schools converted to LED. Why wouldn't it be possible for some of the larger organizations or businesses to be eligible for some of this support?
That's a great question and I'm really glad you asked it. We do. Uh, these are just two of our programs that are specifically targeted towards uh communities that don't have a ton of resources and schools are under the DOE, which have their unique requirements. Um, and we have a particular advisor focused in that area. They just fall under a different program. There are a lot of the time customized projects that require a lot of um uh like measuring of the data before and after to see how many, how many kilowatts are being saved pre and post retrofit. So we do a lot of custom lighting projects and a lot of prescriptive, which is just a like for like replacement. The only school that I know of that has benefited from this program particularly has been Punahou, um because they are 501(c)(3). And we have done that. But most of the time, and Kamehameha Schools is is engaging with us right now as well. And we, we definitely do a lot of schools. It's just under a different program than Energy Advantage if it's not meeting these particular requirements.
Okay, but I, but I think that if you spend some of your effort in that direction, you would be able to uh save a lot more money. Okay, other questions? Elizabeth and then uh I think.
So if a homeowners association is a 501(c)(3) and has a facility, would they qualify possibly for retrofitting lighting or something?
Yes, in their common area lighting, not for the tenants themselves.
Yes, right, for the, like the clubhouse or something like that. Okay.
They would.
Paige?
Very informative. Thank you so much, really, from something I never knew anything about to something I'm interested in. Could you by any chance get that slide presentation to Roberta so that we could get it filtered down to us?
I have it, I have it, Paige. I'll send it out.
Thank you so much, really informative. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to add one thing uh to this. The reason that I'm here as well is because the uh, there is a fluorescent ban happening next year where we can no longer really incentivize LEDs. It's kind of like how solar had that early adoption period and now it's phased out. So the incentives aren't there like they used to be. The same thing's happening with LED lighting and we might only have this program in this way uh for a short time. So we want to be able to let everybody know about it so that way they could take advantage of it. And yeah, I I think that it starts January 2025. However, there's like a one-year leeway process. So yeah, by January 2026, um the, this program in particular, Energy Advantage, might evolve to something different.
I I just had one last thing. If there's a 501(c)(3) that's not exactly sure where they, which program they fall into, is that something you can help them figure out if they're looking for a grant, but they're not sure if they fall into this category or that grant or, you know, or which?
Yeah.
Fit?
We do require the um IRS determination letter uh so we can assess. However, their first step would be to just reach out to us, give us a call, check out our website, inquire, um, and we can help facilitate them through the process to see if they are eligible. Yeah.
Joel?
Thank you. I just want to comment, having been in the industry for about 20 years, that this is neither new nor small. It's been around since the 1980s and it's very large on the mainland and exceptionally successful for small companies, for large companies. One of the utilities that I worked with as a consultant had about two dozen employees dedicated just for retrofits for military bases in Southern California. It is a huge opportunity for energy savings.
Thank you, I agree.
Any other questions for our presenter? Anybody online? All right, thank you very much, Sophia, for joining us tonight and uh sharing that information. I think most of us were not aware that this was available to small businesses and possibly condominium common areas. So there are a lot of condominiums in this area that may be contacting you.
Please feel free to take my business card and an Energy Advantage pamphlet if you'd like. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to be moving on to our officials reports and starting with Mayor Rick Longiardi's representative, Amy Asselby. Amy, are you available online?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, I meant to be there tonight and I got out of work way too late, so I apologize. But I wanted to update on uh three issues that um questions were posed last month. So I'll start with the first one on floodlights at Cocoa Head District Park. The question was asked, are the floodlights left on every night or just for games and practices held at the park? Do these floodlights comply with the requirements to protect seabirds and protect light pollution? And the response from DPR is that the Cocoa Head District Park Pony Field Lights are only turned on when there is permit issued for games and practices. There are currently groups using the lighted field every night. Lights are intended to comply with all requirements. Okay, so moving on to Cocoa Head Stables, is the contractor paying rent since they're not open to the public and how long is the current contract? Okay, um, I guess this one was really not answered, unfortunately. And I understand the presentation was delayed until next month on Cocoa Crater um stable contract.
That's correct. The presenter was ill and I understand that uh Ms. Holyfield had another prior engagement. So I'm going to put it on next month's agenda.
Perfect. Well, I will check in and make sure that um Dida is able to answer these questions as they were referred to DPR and the response was that this question should go to DES. So I apologize for that kind of un-response. So the third question was to DFM and ENV about the request for cleanup of garbage at the city bus stop. Um, that was on Kalani, Kalanioli uh near Pico Lane and could that be picked up? So the Division of Road Maintenance and the Stored Property Ordinance Branch, with assistance from HPD, visited the bus stops along Kalanioli Highway near Pico Drive on September 10th, 2024. No homeless individual was found at the bus stops or in the area and trash behind the Malka Bus Stop Shelter was scheduled for cleanup on September 17th, 2024. Um, and that is the summary of the report.
Okay, questions for the mayor's representatives, starting with Paige?
Hi, Amy, thank you for your report. Quick question, could you tell me what the status is of the emergency siren for subdistrict 11, the one that goes um on the side of Cocoa Head uh right um in uh Honolulu Triangle? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Check on that. I thought the emergency sirens were Haimea and not the city, though.
Thanks.
Okay.
But I can check in. So the emergency siren, can you remind me of the location?
It's in subdistrict 11. It's right on the side of Cocoa Crater. It's the uh, it's right in subdistrict 11. I forget the number. I can get you the number of the siren. I just don't have it on me. Rep's got it, Rep Ward's got it, actually.
Question from Elizabeth?
This is actually for parks. A lot of work was put into the sand dune protection where we utilized a lot of boulders as natural barriers. And there was this small outcrop of sand dune that was being protected with boulders. And unfortunately, we noticed that city parks decided that they needed some of those boulders for another area, so they removed several of them and put them elsewhere where it's probably needed. But now this sand dune outcrop area is being damaged after over a year or so of restoration work. So it's just really disheartening and um I don't know if we can get boulders put back there or if we could at least ask the courtesy of letting us know before that happens. Thank you. This is at Vavomalu Beach.
Or where?
Yeah, Vavomalu Beach.
At Vavomalu.
Yeah. And so they use the boulders across from Sandy Beach, which I understand to block the vehicles from going in across Kalanioli. You know, the, there was a lot of vehicles going into the mountainside. Um, but they took it from another area that was already under restoration. And uh, there are boulders available, um, again, we can get from DLNR on their Vavomalu side. But um, yeah, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay.
So in summary, Amy, replace the boulders at Vavomalu Beach. Thank you.
Okay, and is there, is there a specific location or you're pretty sure they're going to know where the boulders were moved from?
I'll share with Chair Mayor and she'll share with you so that it's more accurate for you. Thank you.
Do you have pictures?
Yes, there are pictures.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor's representative? Anybody online? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
City Council Chair Tommy Waters' office. Amanda, I think I saw you online.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Amanda Zepeta here for Council Chair Waters. Um, I was just quickly looking up some information uh regarding uh Board Member Alton's question about the emergency siren. It is under State Emergency and Management Agency. Um, I had previously provided some information and I'm just quickly looking at it. It looked like work for the siren um is currently out for bid and they expect a ward to occur in the next 60 to 90 days with construction to start in the first quarter of 2025. This information was from July 3rd. So it looks like that that is in the works, but it's still a little, a little ways off for the repairs. Um, so I just wanted to provide that quickly. And then for my report, I just have um, I want to remind everyone, since we're right at the end of September here, that the deadline for property, um, home exemption, as well as for the tax credit, um, deadline is September 30th for filing for both of those. Super important um for anyone who owns a home and may not have um an exemption where they live in the home, owner occupied as the primary residence. It's a significant savings on your tax. So this time of year, we really do our best to get that word out and make sure everyone is aware of that. I will provide some information in the chat for that, uh, for the, the links to apply for both of those. Um, but again, September 30th is a very hard deadline. It's a deadline by ordinance, which means there are absolutely no exceptions. As much as we want, uh, we want to be able to give you the exception. We want the administration to be able to do that. They just can't because again, the ordinance is uh, the deadlines aren't by ordinance. For, uh, just have a couple of legislative updates for those who have been interested in Bill 50 related to Waikiki Street activities. That was heard today in our Transportation Committee hearing. It was reported out for adoption. So um, what that means is basically it's still only passed first reading at the first council, at, at the full council, excuse me. We do recognize that it needs some work. We need to be clearer in language so that everyone understands what exactly it does and says. And so there is work to be done on that and it will be done prior to the next committee hearing. Bill 52 relating to e-bicycles, you know, we, there's been a lot of discussion lately and more and more about e-bicycle safety. And so that's an important measure that is before the council. It passed first reading at the September 4th full council meeting and was reported out for adoption today at the Transportation Committee hearing. So again, we expect to hear that back at the next full council meeting. Um, please feel free to um read up on that and provide testimony. I think that's a really important measure that people should be aware of and should be weighing in on. I'll provide that information in the chat as well. We have several measures relating to real property taxation that are up. Uh, we know again that this is a really important issue for um, for property owners. We have Bill 45 that increases the tax credit threshold, the income threshold from 80,000 to 100,000. And that's an important tax credit because it basically caps your property tax at 3% of your income. Um, when your combined title holder income is at that 80,000 or below threshold. There's also um, uh, excuse me, yeah, that's the one, it increased. There's also, excuse me, yeah, that's the one, it increases that, that threshold from 80 to 100,000. So we're really looking forward to being able to pass that one out. Bill 46 establishes a vacant home or empty home tax, many of you have probably been hearing about that. It is scheduled to be heard tomorrow in the Housing Sustainability and Health Committee, so if you're interested in learning more about that or weighing in on that, the testimony portal is open for that one, and we encourage you to participate if you're interested. Bill 47, 2024 CD1 creates an Aina Kupuna dedication for real property owned and occupied by the same family for at least 50 years. If passed, this dedication would basically subject the property to the minimum tax, which is $300 a year. So that, that, it's, they would only be paying that $300 minimum tax per year if, if this bill passed and if a property was eligible for that dedication. Bill 48 establishes a dedication for a long-term residential rental unit. These are for those higher taxed second homes that we know a lot of folks are renting out as long-term residential units for local families or individuals. So we really want to work towards providing that dedication for those long-term units so that we can bring that property tax burden down for those homeowners. Bill 49 provides another tax relief to certain homeowners. It exempts incremental increases in the assessed value of real property exceeding a certain percent of the previous year's assessed value. So we're looking forward to hearing more about that. That one is not currently scheduled, but it may come up again at full council next month. And then last but not least, at the September 4th council meeting, council adopted Resolution 24-216 FD1. This is related to the Red Hill Crisis. This urges the US Navy and the DOD to immediately implement weekly testing of all of the Navy's groundwater monitoring wells and drinking water wells at the Red Hill facility. And that also includes, there was a floor draft amendment to include a third-party testing agency for that one. And with that, that's all of the information I have to provide tonight. I'm happy to take back any questions if I can.
Questions for Chair Waters' office. Paige?
Hi, Amanda. Can you tell me what bill it was again? That's the 50, living in a house for 50 years plus? Is that just for, is that a bill for just Hawaiians, or is that, is that any resident?
It, it's any resident that meets the criteria. Thanks for that question. It's Bill 47, CD1, and it creates what's called, what they're calling an Aina Kupuna dedication, not necessarily just for Hawaiians, it's just the title that they came up with, basically suggesting land that's owned by older generations or, or has at least been around in the same family for at least 50 years. But again, any family that has owned that property for at least 50 years would be eligible for that dedication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Joe?
Yeah, with the September 30th deadline for the homestead exemption, I believe, can you clarify the frequency at which that's needing to be applied? Is it one time to the property to your owner, or is it annual every year? What's the, just to remind neighbors and such?
Great question, thank you. So the homeowner exemption is a one-time, you basically only have to apply for it one time as long as you stay in the same home that you occupy as your primary dwelling. If you move, relocate, if you, you know, have another property that you're living in as your primary, then you wouldn't, no longer be eligible for that. But again, it's something that you would only have to apply with one, apply for one time, as long as your circumstances don't change. The other one, on the other hand, that the tax credit you apply for annually because it has that income requirement, you, you know, you're going to be required to, to provide your, your annual income on a yearly basis to ensure that you continue to qualify for that. And I will say about the homeowner's exemption, it only applies one time. So if you have multiple title holders on a, on a single property, you can have, and I would encourage every owner to apply for the exemption, but you would only get the credit once. However, the benefit of having everyone who is a title holder apply for the exemption is that for some reason, if, if the, if the person who does qualify and get approved for the exemption should no longer qualify, maybe I've seen many times where the homeowner actually dies, and then their spouses left and perhaps didn't apply for the exemption, and, and they lose that exemption, and I hate to see that. So we really do encourage every title holder on the property who is an owner occupant, primary dwelling, to apply for it and, and just have that on record in case anything happens.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Amanda, thank you very much for your report tonight. Thank you for joining us. I was told that we were going to be getting a new representative from Governor Josh Green's office. I'm not sure if they have been appointed yet. Is there anyone who is here or online representing Governor Josh Green's office? Not tonight, I guess. Hopefully by next month, we will have someone from the governor's office that will be joining us at our meetings. Senator Stanley Chang's office. Anybody online?
Yes. Aloha Kako, everybody. My name is Faisa Shenguya, and I am an intern at Senator Chang's office. I wanted to provide here some links first in the chat, and hopefully they can be shared with everybody in the meeting today. But I just want to provide some updates. You can view our September monthly district newsletter at the top link in our chat. And then additionally, you can sign up for our housing newsletter. It's in second link in the chat, E-E-P-U-R-L dot com forward slash G capital R capital I zero J F. All right, moving on, registration is currently open for the 2024 Children in Youth Summit on October 10th. Young people 24 and under can share their thoughts with the legislature on ways to improve the quality of life for youth in Hawaii. And registration is available at this third link in the chat, hawaieycys.org. You can add your driver's license or state ID to your iPhone mobile wallet. Your digital ID will be accepted at TSA if you're interested in learning more about that. You can go to the fourth link here at hi.dot.hawaii.gov/highways/mobile-driver-license. So this would be in your, where if you use Apple Pay, this ID will be available in that same location. And lastly, the Hawaii Judiciary is mailing 2025 juror questionnaires to select residents. If you receive one, please complete and return it within 10 days to avoid facing a penalty. If you have any questions about your questionnaire, please call 808-539-4360, or you can visit the courts website at courts.state.hi.us, and I'll also provide those two contact information in the chat. And I am happy to take back any questions you have, Senator Chang's office.
Questions for Senator Chang's representative? Yes, Paige?
Hi, I don't have a question. Thank you for your report, but if you could please email me a copy of the newsletter, I would appreciate it. I don't have chat and I don't have Apple Pay, so getting your information is impossible for me. So if you could actually email me a copy of his newsletter, I'd appreciate it.
Which newsletter are you referring to? The monthly one or the housing?
Stanley Chang's newsletter. That's who you're representing, right?
Oh, yes, but he has two newsletters. Okay, okay. All right. Do you mind, I don't believe I have your email. Do you mind providing that to me?
Yeah, you've got all of our emails. You have all of our emails.
Faisa, you can send it to me and then I will forward it to the board members. And, Faisa, how do you spell your last name?
I'm Shenguya.
Here. Cheyenne Guya.
Shenguya, yes.
Okay. Okay, Greg, did you have a question?
Well, it looks like it'll be resolved. She sends all these different lists to you and you share it through email because we don't have access to the chat while we're sitting at the table here. And I'm not certain what the status is if we save that and share it, but it would be easier by email.
Any other comments or questions for Faisa? Okay, yes, so Faisa, if you could just send me the newsletters by email, I will forward it to all of the board members. Thank you so much.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight. You're a new face. Are you new in Senator Chang's office?
Yes, I just started last month.
Oh, well, welcome.
Thank you.
And tell Senator Chang that we'd like to see more of him, too.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
All right, Representative Ward?
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Gillian, I'm Representative Ward, Chief of Staff, and Rep Ward regrets not being able to join you in person this evening, but I'm going to give a brief report on his behalf. So to begin, we just wanted to provide an update. Representative Ward does hold a monthly beer summit at the Oahu Club. These will be in hiatus, though, for the remainder of the year in light of the upcoming election and the holiday season, but we will be resuming on Thursday, January 9th.
Gillian, can you slow down? We're having difficulty understanding what you're saying, so don't speak too quickly because the connection is not too clear.
I apologize. Sure. So just the first update I wanted to provide is that Representative Ward, he holds a monthly beer summit at the Oahu Club, and these will be in hiatus through the end of the year, so we'll be resuming on Thursday, January 9th. We have already confirmed our first speaker of 2025, it will be Scott Psyke, and at that point, he'll be providing an outlook on the upcoming legislative session as it prepares to proceed for the first time since 2017 without his leadership. So mark your calendars for January 9th, no more beer summits for the remainder of the year. Secondly, I won't go into too much detail, as you're all well aware of the proposal for the offshore wind farm project in the Kaevi Channel. Representative Ward is following this very diligently, and at this point, he's quite interested in how the community feels. So we have a poll available on his website, gene-dash-ward.com, and if you haven't already, we really encourage you just to let us know your thoughts on this project and whether you're in support or opposition. Next, the motto of our office is "You Ask, We Act," and we'd just like to report on a success story. We had a constituent from the Kailakaai condominiums reach out to us regarding a pretty substantial trash pileup that was building behind the Safeway in the Hawaii Kai Shopping Center, and we connected with the property management company of the shopping, shopping center, and we were able to get that cleared away. So if anyone lives in this area, particularly in the Kailakaai condominiums, we really asked that you use bulk item pickup services. There are numerous available through the city and county of Honolulu, private companies, even charitable organizations. Please respect our neighborhood and also moving forward, if you see anything else like this, please feel free to contact our office and we can help be a liaison to improve the community. We also are preparing Representative Ward's bill package for the next legislative session, so if you have any ideas that you would like us to look into putting into legislation, now's the time to let us know. You can contact our office at repward@capital.hawaii.gov. And lastly, I just wanted to provide an even further update regarding Member Alton's inquiry about the siren. So that is under the state agency Haima, and the last correspondence that we got regarding Siren OA 101 was on July 24th, and that was from Administrator James Barrows. And he did tell us that the projected start date is the beginning of 2025, as Amanda mentioned, but due to a letter that we sent, he understands that this is really not acceptable, that there is increasing risk by waiting that long. So the last that we heard is that the agency is looking at accelerating this repair, and as this was two months ago, I'll be sure to follow up with them and see where we are in the process, and I'll get back to Member Alton as well as Chair Mayor on what's going on with Siren OA 101. If you have any more questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Gillian. That was quite informative and quite lengthy. Are there any questions for Gillian Anderson from Representative Ward's office? Anybody from the community or online? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate your being here with us tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody from Representative Mark Hashem's office with us tonight? All right, I don't see anyone. Is there anybody from our congressional representatives? Nobody. Okay, we're going on to a board business, and first on our agenda is considering a letter to Governor Green on the Neighborhood Board's position on an offshore wind farm proposal. Board members, as you are aware, at our meeting last week, last month, we took extensive testimony from the public, and at that time, I had asked the board whether you wanted to take a position, and the board's consensus was that we wanted to send a letter to the governor about our concerns about the offshore wind project. So I did draft a letter and sent it to everybody for your input and review. So I am open to entertaining a motion to send a letter to Governor Green stating our opposition to the development of wind farms in the Kaevi Channel and urging the state to focus their efforts on alternative energy fuel sources other than offshore wind to meet Hawaii's future energy needs. Paige?
I just have a question. There was one thing that I didn't see in the letter, and I don't know if it needs to be in the letter, but I didn't see anything in here about the fact that they downgraded our threat level, and that was kind of something that was kind of important, that I thought was kind of important. Is it, is it in here? Because I, I don't know, I didn't see it, but I don't know, I might be the only one that thinks that that should be in here.
It's paragraph five.
Do we have copies of the letter to read?
I sent it to everybody last week to read and review.
So no modifications have been made?
Uh, modifications were supposed to be sent to me during the last week. I'm going to finalize the letter, and I will be sending it out either tomorrow or Thursday.
So there are no modifications to what you sent out at this point?
Uh, one modification was to add the Neighborhood Board chairs of our neighbors, neighboring Neighborhood Board chairs, and I will be including a paragraph in the letter on any action that we take tonight.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion from Paige. Is there a second?
This is, this is Charles. I will, I'll provide my input in writing via email, but I think one of the, the very first thing that we, we ought to mention in there is our desire to, to really help our community here, residents, with the highest average cost of electricity as being one of the first thing, the concerns. of the first thing, the concerns that we have rather than anything else. That's one of the reasons why I asked a question about the wind, the windmills, is whether or not he's going to defray the cost or lower the cost of energy, and the answer was not sure. And, and in the mainland projects, we know that the wind farms, uh, costs continues to grow up because of its maintenance. So I'll provide that language to you sometime tomorrow.
All right. Uh, comments from Elizabeth, then Greg, then Jean?
So in the Star Advertiser paper, it had mentioned about a decrease, but that decrease the consumer doesn't see. Hiko is the customer, so that's what's important to understand. And I can tell you that in the presentation that I had listened to, that savings doesn't come direct to us. It's, it's purely Hiko. Thank you.
Who did I say was next? Greg and then, Greg and then Jean?
Okay, so I am concerned a little about one paragraph in the, the letter because we didn't really take a vote. We did feel like we served as a, a community forum, and people did turn out and spoke very much in opposition to it, and I thought maybe we, as the recipients, should convey that to the governor and others, but we didn't really take a position. So I don't like saying that our board stands with the East Honolulu community members who overwhelmingly oppose the development of a wind farm. A part of our, uh, not official action was because there is more to still delve into. The Star Advertiser article gave additional information. This is just the start of a long process. So I, I think in some ways we might still be needing to know more before we take a formal position, but the fact is, we have not yet taken a formal position, so it's not really the position of the board. I do think we, as a community forum, can convey to the governor or whoever we want what happened here last month, and it would be extremely accurate to, to say that there was almost overwhelming opposition, as there was in Waimea. We also, we have the motion on the table, and I know someone is here to testify as well, so we need to allow community input on this at the same time. So I'm not sure if we are ready to send that letter right now, or if we should at least soften the language so that it's not, we have to perhaps soften the language so that it doesn't say that it's the board's position, because we have not taken a position.
Um, that's what we're considering tonight, whether we want to take a position. Okay, Elizabeth, or no, Jean first and then Elizabeth. Jean, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I don't think we should send the letter in this form for several reasons. Number one, um, it, it's confusing to me. On the one hand, it says, um, it, it cites the Kaevi Channel and that there's opposition to the wind farm in the Kaevi Channel, but in other places in the, in the letter, like in the last paragraph, it broadens it out to wind farms, period. And I think we should focus only on the Kaevi Channel. I don't think we should be telling Kauai or Maui or the Big Island whether or not they should have wind farms. Um, so I think it's too broad. Second, there are several statements in this that give me agita. Number one is the statement that, that the Department of Defense lowered our national defense posture? That's absurd. There's no basis for that statement.
They did, it is true, Jean.
They did not lower our defense posture. They changed the boundaries of the zone.
And the letter says possibly lowering our defense posture.
Yes, I saw the possibly, but there's no evidence to support that at all. May I finish? Thank you, Elizabeth. So there's no evidence to support the idea that the Department of Defense did anything inappropriate, and that us calling into question the veracity of that department is ridiculous, okay? That has to come out of this letter, in my view, or we undermine our credibility as an objective body that's looking at evidence. And that gets to my other concerns about the letter. It says that these turbines would be dangerous to marine mammals that inhabit our oceans. Did we take any scientific testimony to that effect? No. Do we know that these wind farms will affect the whales or the turtles? No. We suppose that, we are guessing that might be the case. We're certainly concerned that that might be the case. I'm concerned, but we have no testimony, no data, no evidence, no analysis to support that statement. Similarly, it says that the wind farms would create impediments to the continued and future recreational use of these waters. I don't understand how that could be the case. They're 12 miles offshore. They're not going to affect surfers. They're not going to affect boaters. How, statement is not supported. So for all of these reasons, I oppose the letter in this form.
All right, thank you, Jean.
I, let me just finish.
First of all, I gave you a week to get back to me with any input on the letter. I said we are not going to be wordsmithing this letter during this meeting.
I'm not asking for wordsmithing during this meeting. I'm asking us to not.
You may vote against sending the letter.
Right, I'm, I'm suggesting we are not ready to send this letter because it's full of erroneous information, and we'll undermine the credibility of the board if we pass it.
All right, Herb, and then Elizabeth?
Uh, my question is, um, Governor Green was like all in on the Kai, on the Big Island and removing all the stuff off the mountain and this and that. Um, is he, I mean, it sounds like he's pushing this, no? Okay, because, uh, you know, I don't want to see it. You know, we're going to change, and I look out to, you know, a different name, but anyway, I, I'm for the letter, and I think we should, uh, move on.
I just want to offer a few clarifying facts from meetings that I've had with the development team and with BoM and with a couple of others that I'd rather not stay at this time. The first thing I want to state is, first of all, the Kaevi Channel in a couple of weeks is going to be enjoyed by the annual race that they always have, the women and the men. That's an annual big thing that they do do. So yeah, it, it would be a problem there. Setting that aside, um, there is an urgency factor, not necessarily to get this letter out tonight. If we get this letter out tonight, just to say that this is what happened at our last meeting, I think that would be really great, and the board can take a position in the future. But an urgency factor for the community to understand is that, one, we have asked BoM, which is a federal agency, to come here and do a public meeting, and they haven't, and it's not fair because this is in our district. Two, the governor didn't go and ask them to start looking at this alternative energy. They came on their own. Wanted to clarify that. Three, the development company, on their own, in 2016, started working to figure out how they can do ocean energy, because in 2016, when they tried to do it at Kaiana Point, the Department of Defense had said for the island of Oahu, it cannot happen. So the private development company filed a petition with the FAA, that's the process. I met with them and they spoke to us and told us about it. It took three years to work with the clearinghouse through the Department of Defense, and they managed to get the posture lowered for the Kaevi Channel. That doesn't guarantee the private development company the right to lease the space. What they did is that they opened up Pandora's Box as a possibility. They whittled down the 2016 decision by the Department of Defense. That's what happened, and that's why we're here today, because of this private developer, which is basic, well, if you read the article in the newspaper, you'll learn a lot. The other thing that's of an urgency factor, that this is not a long process. The BoM, federal agency, indicated that they were thinking about doing leases in X amount of years from now. The private development company has asked them to accelerate that opportunity for bidding out leases to 2026. We can't get BoM out here to do a public meeting to talk to us. We are, and we only meet once a month. We are really behind the eight ball. So I just wanted to share that with you. That's why it's important to at least represent all those people that were here last month. And if the board wants to take a position next month, take a, take a position next month, but at least represent that community that came out.
Any other questions, comments? Paige?
I'd just like to make a motion that we, we move forward with getting this letter out. I don't know how to word it, but that's my motion.
Do we want the letter to reflect our opposition or that we're, we side with the community, or should it just be reporting what community has shared with us? Paige and then Lisa?
Well, I don't know, maybe we, maybe, I mean, I don't know. Maybe we need to take a vote as a board if we are opposed to this, and then we can include it in the letter. Is that how that works? I don't know.
Uh, well, first of all, we do have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to read it again. To send a letter to Governor Green stating our opposition to the development of wind farms in the Kaevi Channel and urging the state to focus their efforts on alternative energy fuel sources other than offshore wind to meet Hawaii's future energy need. Okay, that's the motion we're considering. So it does, it is saying, you know, to take a position and urging the state to pursue other energy resources. Okay, comments? Greg, you had your hand up?
It was just that Paige was making a motion to, well, a motion was already under consideration, but I, I do, um, where were you reading from? Was that in your, when you sent out this? I downloaded the attachment, but you had given that language about what you say we just are considering, which definitely says, the agenda says our position. You just reiterated what you had conveyed to us somewhere about our opposition to, and my point is, we have not yet formally stated our opposition or support. So anyway, um, that's why I just thought we should just reflect what the community said at our meeting last month.
Okay. Sam?
I, I do not feel that we, as a board, have enough information on this project to know the ramifications, um, to, to confidently state at this point that we oppose the project carte blanche, because we have not seen any studies of how it would impact whales and migratory birds. The Alkahi Energy still has to do that research. Do we, you know, have that comparison of this project versus, say, the oil tankers that bring in millions of barrels of oil every single year to this island and, and what those impacts are? Because that's the current system that we're advocating for. If, if we look at every other opportunity and say no, people that are saying this is going to impact the view from Lanai Lookout don't even know where this project is being proposed, because it's not even visible from this side of the island. It's only visible from Kaileua, Waimea, Allo side, Kaneo. It's not, you can't see it looking out towards Molokai or Lanai. So that's not going to impact canoe racers like people are talking about. The whales come from the south side. They're not as heavily, um, we just don't know enough to, to say that this project is wrong, and I think it's way too premature to, to say no. So I, I will be voting no on this letter.
Elizabeth?
Real sanctuary shares a boundary with the boundary that Akahi showed us where their project is, and a vast number of migratory birds transfer right through there. If you think we need to start calling experts in that area to come to this board to educate us, I went out and I educated myself, and I went to lots of meetings. So I don't know if we have every 30 days to turn around and bring experts in here to talk about, and I, we should wait for Akahi to go out to do a study. Let me tell you what the plan is as it relates to the birds and as it relates to the whales and the turtles and the ocean floor and the coral. It's called mitigation. Mitigation simply means the amount of kill that is allowed, and then they count it, and then if they need to change it, then they change it. That is mitigation.
Jessica?
Yep, I, I do believe there was, uh, urgency on this issue, um, and it talked, I think, a lot about, there's only a certain point where we can stop it, where by the time it's approved, there'll be years beyond when it's actually constructed, built, and implemented. So there is an urgency now, and I didn't see any members of the audience tonight coming up and having comment on the, the stables, even though they didn't present. I didn't see anybody commenting on the research and the rescue. I saw a whole lot of people here last week commenting about this, and as a representative of the community, I do see urgency, and I do see the need to support their message. If we want to take the board's position out and we're not ready to talk about it, that's fine, but there's still an urgency from all 50, 100 people that showed up last week that wanted that message to get to the governor that we discussed at the same meeting.
Uh, Lisa? Is there somebody online? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is Chelsea.
Okay, go ahead, Chelsea.
Since what's on the table is a motion, and I will second that motion, and how we craft the letter and it, and, and the position, I think it's, I agree with some of the board members that who said, we do need to voice this, and whether or not that's in, in the, the strength of the message or the, the reasons, I think we need to put something officially so that, so the board speaks, and whether Greg said about whether or not, you know, we should take, take a position, but I think, I agree that, that our voices and the community members' voices need to be heard, and, and that's the reason why the board exists, because we're the conduit as well. So I second the motion.
Uh, it has been seconded already, Chelsea, but thank you. Lisa, and then Jean. Lisa?
I was going to second the motion.
I'm trying to think now, who did second it? Joel seconded it, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, Jean?
I just want to say that I can support a letter reflecting what we heard from the community last month, going out, um, but without some of the sort of inflammatory statements here for which we have little or no evidence. So yeah, by all means, let's send a letter saying if there's an urgency to this, and I don't really see that, that the community is very upset. We need BoM to come in. We need, let's get the State Energy Office in here to talk to us about this, um, find out more what's going on, and then let's take a position for or against this project or projects in general. I mean, this is only one proposer, Alkahi Energy. The, the, the Bureau of Energy Management is going to designate spots all around the islands where wind farms could potentially be put, and so we may not like any of them, or maybe there's one that's 200 miles offshore that we don't care about. So before we take a very broad stance, let's get more information, support the community by saying, hey, people are concerned, we need you to listen.
Joel? And then Elizabeth?
Having heard a lot of comments, even after I second the motion, I still support sending a letter out. However.
Can you speak up, please?
It's, I still support sending a letter out, having heard all these comments from the board members. However, it is unfortunate that government agencies that are responsible have not been helpful in identifying what the process is nor the issues or concerns that they might have, and the developer was negligent and evasive throughout the entire presentation. So neither organizations have been helpful in allowing the board to take a real concrete position, but as a conduit from, for the neighborhood, I think we have an urgent responsibility to share what we heard and the temperament of what we heard, because it was pretty extreme. And I think that would be a good position for us to take. Um, and I think that would be a good position for us to take while we really tell the governor, the government agencies need to step forward and help educate us and everybody else so we clearly understand what's coming.
Paige?
I, I've heard everybody's, um, opposition to this, sending the letter out as it is. But I've done my own research, like Elizabeth. I've listened to the presenters. I went online. I looked up the companies. I have spoken to people who actually construct and, and work on these types of windmills, wind farms. And I could tell you that with the information that I received, I'm vehemently opposed to this project. I don't need to have more information. Um, I, information is power. I'm all about that and I have no problem listening to more information, but I can say that I am opposed to this based on the information that I have. I would like to call for a vote, if that's possible, of this board and the members that are present on whether or not they oppose this project. And if we have a majority that says that they do oppose it, then the letter goes out as is. If the majority says that they don't oppose it and they want all these state agencies and environmental agencies to come and talk to us about how much of an impact it's going to be, then we don't include it in the letter. But I think the letter needs to go out either way. And I think that I'd like to call for a vote on whether we oppose it or not.
I think she's saying, call the question.
All right. Um, Spencer, I would like you to help us with a roll call vote. Um, do I need to repeat the motion or is everybody familiar with it?
Can you clarify what the vote is going to be?
Calling, calling for the question, um, ceases all discussion at this point and calls for the question. Yes?
Yep. Yes means what? No means what?
It still calls for the question. Okay? So. This is board action at this point. All right. Uh, Paige and Herb, uh, the issue is whether or not we want to, um, allow those members in the public audience to say a few words before we take a vote. Are we okay with that? We, we can, we can limit it. All right. And Elizabeth also wanted the last comment.
I withdraw.
Okay.
I was, uh, Chair was recommending that perhaps we pause with, uh, your call for the question so that we could accommodate the public. And that I had said, well, then I also wanted to make my statement and that was the request, but you would need to agree.
All right. If there's anybody in the audience that wanted to say something, please come on up. Keep your comments to a couple of minutes, okay? And, um, while you're coming up, Elizabeth had a comment to make.
I wanted to share another reason, I thought it was important to get Bohm out here. Maybe Congressman Case can do that for us. When the ocean, when the ocean is leased, 100% of that money goes to DC, stays with the feds. The money that the developer pays to lease the ocean. When the developer sells the energy to HIGO, all of that goes to HIGO. Period. Nothing more. Thank you.
No. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Phil Esterman. Um, I wasn't here at the last meeting. Uh, I wish I had been, but, um, I'm, I have a background of having, uh, spent a good part of my life, uh, preserving the Kaevi coastline. Um, back in the eighties, many of you were probably not here at that time. Uh, so I'm, I'm going to try to pick my words carefully. I also worked in the energy division in the conservation branch for three years at the state energy division. I wonder what you think the energy mix for Hawaii will look like in 2045? Do you think it will exclude a significant amount of wind? Um, I kind of doubt it. Wind is one of our major resources. Natural resources. That, um, and we have to concentrate seriously about the issue of climate change. Okay? People talk about it a lot, but it is here. And it's going to affect our lives and our kids' lives and our grandchildren's lives. And so I think all of us need to, um, figure out what our feelings, our thoughts are about that.
I'm clear.
We all want to have solar. I think we want to have as much rooftop solar as we can in the state and we have a lot. But what is, what is the energy mix going to look like? So I traveled through the Baltic Sea on a cruise ship a few years back. And I was struck as I went by and visited Denmark and Sweden, northern Germany, Finland. I was struck by the vast array of windmills in the water. And I was first negatively impacted. You know, this is really ugly. I came here to experience the beauty of this part of the, and I've traveled widely and this is one place I hadn't been yet. And then I reflected on it more and I thought, these people get it. They really get it. They're willing to sacrifice what they think would be the beauty of their coastline and the beauty of their ocean, the Baltic. Because we're in it now and we have to do something about it. I looked up online the other day, what, what's the energy, what does Sweden's energy mix? I think they, it was 20% is wind. I used to, I lived on Molokai for a while and, uh, the proposal was to put wind, windmills down on the west end, the north west corner of the island to generate electricity. And a lot of people, uh, local people, friends of mine just said, they're not going to put any windmills down there. We won't let them. Okay. Then there was a proposal to put a lot of windmills on Lanai and bring the energy over here. And that died. I don't know if it was because the cable had to pass through too deep of water or what it was. Um, but I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I, in my mind, if I were to look out on the ocean 10 miles away or 12 miles away and see an array of windmills, I would not just reject it because it impairs my visual escape. And I'm, I'm sorry, am I speaking too long? Okay. So, um, I'm sorry I wasn't here last week. I may have been an, an exception to some of the voices, but, um, I, I admire, I adore the beauty of this, of these islands. But, uh, let's keep in mind, we're part of a, of a globe that's under great stress and it's going to get greater.
All right. Thank you, Phil. It's anybody else that wanted to, uh, comment? Uh, Lisa, did you say, did you want to say something?
I want to just mention very quickly that the Baltic Sea is very shallow and it is a completely different marine environment. And that's where the first, maybe outside of England too, lots and lots of windmills, but it's extremely shallow and it's very, very different from the volcanic islands and because our slopes are extremely deep. And so it will be floating windmills and that technology is not really being practiced. If, I don't know if there's any movements like that out there and for how many years, but there'll be quite experiment, experiment because of the ocean conditions.
Thank you. Keep your comments short, please. Introduce yourself.
I was going to say, um, for the birds, it's the cooler. Check out the migration path from Alaska to, um, here and it goes around the Pacific. So like the bats in, um, Kukui, that's something that is subject, subject to see ahead of schedule. So try to look into that.
Thank you very much. All right. Elizabeth, last comment?
Acknowledge Phil Esterman, how the good work that he's done. We all know about the Save Sandy Beach. And so I just have to acknowledge that. And, and to that I want to mention that, um, I understand and I hear what you have to say, Phil. Uh, but there is a thing called about, called usage. That's our responsibility, each one of us. And also, um, another thing called efficiency. So in some of my conversations that I've had with people that do work at the state office, energy, um, those words are, they're very excited about and those words are not, have not been, um, utilized or taken off the shelf and dusted. So I'm just sharing with you that there's usage and there's also efficiency that needs to be looked at and perhaps down the road, something else. But thank you.
All right. The question was called for. We have a motion on the table. Uh, Spencer, our neighborhood assistant is going to call the roll. And, um, so you're going to vote aye to send the letter or nay not to send the letter? And, um, yeah, yes, Paige?
We going to take a vote first to find out if this board is opposed or no to this? I mean, we don't know whether to include it or not because we don't know if the board is opposed or not.
Do you want, do you want to take that vote before
Yeah.
sending the letter?
Well, yeah, because I think we send the letter no matter what, but we can't include that we're opposed to it if we don't know if we're opposed to it.
All right. So you want to make a motion to oppose the windmill project that was presented to the board?
Right, to take a vote if we're opposed or not.
All right. So Greg?
Point of order, I think. Good. Yeah. It, it seems like if the motion that you accepted is as you regretted, that does include stating the board's opposition. Um, because otherwise, if we do oppose it, then I think that kind of paints us into a corner as far as future opposition or whatever, if somehow it wouldn't be approved tonight due to legitimate questions that are yet unanswered. But anyway, um, I think we either proceed and we don't send a letter, but we're still doing a disservice to the community if we don't let the governor know that there was strong opposition here in Hawaii Kai. So I'm still.
Motion is to send the letter as is. Get it out.
Well, let me repeat. Uh, Greg is saying that the motion already states our opposition to the project. Let me repeat the motion, at least the beginning part, to send a letter to the Governor Green stating our opposition to the development of the wind farm in Kaevi Channel and urging the state to focus on alternate energy sources. All right. Spencer, please call the roll. Um, members who are online, would you please put your, um, uh, video on for the roll, for the roll call vote?
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your names. I haven't practiced that. Byron Tierney.
What was the name?
Tierney. Paige Alt.
Yes, in favor.
Chelsea.
Aye.
Joseph Pugh. Greg Madsen.
Aye.
Elijah Lee.
Aye.
Holly Lyons. In favor of sending and opposed to the project, is that correct?
Correct.
Holly, what did you say?
Send the letter. I'm opposed to the project.
Okay. So you're an aye?
Yes.
Elizabeth Riley.
Yes, please.
Herbert Schreiner.
Aye.
Elise Sivianah.
It's Ilse Silvercrutt.
I'm in favor.
Sorry about that. Samuel Wolf.
No.
Lisa Bishop.
Aye.
Dixon Park.
Aye.
Joel Brilliant. And Chair Mayor.
Yes.
If the motion passes, we have 12, 13 in favor to oppose, no abstentions. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, board members, I will finalize the letter and send it this week and copy all of you on the letter. Okay? Any last comments before we leave this agenda item and move on? Yes, Joel?
If the board, any board members have any additional suggestions of the letter, do you want to hear them before you send them out? And what would you like as your absolutely deadline?
All right. If you have anything that you would like to suggest, I may not include it. However, you may suggest your revisions to me tomorrow and I will wait until Thursday before I make any final, uh, distribution. Okay?
If there's a change though, we have to take another vote, don't we?
There won't be any major change. We, the suggested revisions are for, uh, WordPress. Okay? All right. We're going to be moving to the second item, which is the proposed development of the land parcel across Hawaii Kai Post Office by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, which is currently zone preservation. And I'm going to defer to Greg to share what is known at this time.
Yeah, which is not a whole lot. Uh, I have sent a couple of inquiries to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and have gotten no acknowledgement or response. So I will keep trying on that. Does anyone else know of anything? Cause there has been some reference to various projects that Department of Hawaiian Homelands is going to be undertaking. And this, the latest one I saw did not, um, mention the Hawaii Kai project. So it makes me wonder if that is off the table at the moment, but don't know. So anyway, I would like to have this, yeah, just dealt with in the future.
All right. Uh, is there any objection to my taking it off the agenda until it becomes more, um, current? Right now, we don't know anything about this parcel. We believe that the trans, the sale of the land has occurred, but we can't be sure of that either. So I think maybe we'll just wait until we get more information and we can bring it back to the board for consideration at that time. Okay. Uh, update on Evi Coast scenic byway. Is there anything other than the request to replace the boulders at Vava Malu Beach? Anything else needing to be updated or reported? Yes, Lisa?
Now, I, I just had a question. Who, who removed the boulders?
Um, I think there's some speculation of who removed it, that it was a legitimate removal because it was to prevent cars from entering the Maoka side of Kalana Ameole Highway.
Okay. Cause you just don't, you just don't pick them up and put them in your, you know?
So we are asking that the boulders that were removed from Vava Malu Beach be replaced. And we did ask, uh, the mayor's representative to, to look into that.
Okay. I just didn't hear exactly who. Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, the last item on our underboard business is an update on Kamilo Nui Valley agriculture. Is there any update? I see Judy Ni'i in the audience. Judy, do you have anything that you might share with us on what is occurring, uh, among the farmlands in Kamilo Nui Valley? the farmlands in Camilo Nui Valley?
Hi, I'm Judy Ni'i from Camilo Nui Farmers and um several farmers have had interactions with Todd Ray, our um land asset manager, but um saw status quo. Now he's saying maybe in November they'll have a more definite proposal. And even though, you know, we expressed to him, you know, the dire circumstances because I'm already ordering my plans for next year and it's, you know, that's all money that I have to put upfront. So, but it doesn't seem like we moved any, any um, any way forward for us. So right now it's just November and our problem is they keep pushing it more and more forward. So our situation is still tenuous.
He may have mentioned November because I did try to urge that Kamehameha Schools make their report to the neighborhood board before the end of this calendar year. Uh, since it was first promised to us, a report during the summer and then, then it was a report in the fall. And so I'm saying it really needs to occur before the year ends. So that might be why he's mentioning November, uh because I'm hoping that that is when they will report back to the community on their plans for all of the leased lands. Um, I do suspect that they will keep that area in agriculture.
Yeah.
However, the lease terms may be very different at that point. And so that I'm sure is going to have a large impact on the farmers. So we'll have to kind of wait and see what happens there. But I think that it will still stay in agriculture, but what that will look like, we're not sure.
Yeah, because we have some new farmers that have come into the valley and they've made investments, you know, for infrastructure. But people like me and, you know, Lobo, I mean Aloha Aina, we're, we're very hesitant to, you know, invest in more infrastructure even though we need it because we don't know what the situation will be.
Hey, thank you. I think we all very much um are concerned and um we hope that we can get some answers pretty quick. Thank you. Any comments? Yes, Jean?
Would it be worthwhile to ping Kamehameha Schools again on this issue and say, hey, can you come in October and November as you promised before the end of the year?
I will remind, uh, I'll remind them again. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna be moving on then. Um, I don't believe any of our board committees have met in the last month, so there are no reports back. And so we're going to be moving on to the approval of our regular meeting minutes for August 27th, 2024. Oh, I'm sorry, Paige? Yes. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't know when to bring this up. Um, and I'm sure that this is something that probably needs to go on to next month's um agenda, but there's two um issues that are part of Hawaii Kai discussions right now. One is the theater space at Coco Marina and um there's a lot of uh talk about what's gonna be going in there. I, I don't know if that's, if that's something that the community wants to talk about. They're certainly talking about it online. Um, and the other thing is Bank of Hawaii, and the only reason I bring this up specifically is because Bank of Hawaii was here and made a proposition to us or made a presentation to us a couple of months ago. And what I hear is that they are no longer gonna be going into that space at Outback. I don't know, but I'm saying that there's some pretty reliable people that are talking about how they're not going in there, that the lease is still held by uh, what's the name of that place that was there? No, Scratch, thank you. By Scratch still holds the lease and that they're using it as, they're using it as a cooking place or their other restaurant. So I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. I, I personally, I'd like to know, but I don't.
Elizabeth? I, I remember during that presentation, there was um a request, if anybody was interested participating in additional conversation as to the cultural um attributes of the area. And I, yeah, because they're doing a cultural impact statement. And I know that, I knew at least five um folks that participated individually with the organization doing that. I don't know if they're planning on reporting that back or not, but it's another good one to ping the bank or the presenter and, and ask if there's anything to share. It's a good idea.
Um, I will reach out and see if I can't get uh some information from the manager of the Coco Marina Shopping Center about the theater property and also follow up with Bank of Hawaii for that um, the old Outback Scratch location. Okay. Moving on to the minutes for August 27th. The minutes were distributed to everybody um by email, so I'll entertain any revisions. Yes, Jean?
The sentence that reads, "Alkahi Energy hopes to be one of the bidders and has proactively sought and obtained a mitigation agreement with the Department of Defense Clearinghouse, which has identified an area in Hawaiian waters that would allow wind turbines." I'm reading from this.
Um, he's reading from the minutes under uh the first paragraph about Alkahi Energy.
Correct. Um, and as I mentioned in my email, um, I don't believe DOD has the authority to quote, "allow windmills." So I would suggest this sentence be modified um to say, "Alkahi Energy hopes to be one of the bidders and has proactively sought and obtained a mitigation agreement with the Department of Defense Clearinghouse that changes the boundaries of the national security and military readiness zone," which is what I believe is the correct reality.
All right. I have no objection to that. It just changes the last half of the sentence. So instead of saying that it has identified an area in Hawaiian waters that would allow wind turbines in a previously restricted area, it will say that that mitigation agreement changes the boundaries of the national security and military readiness zone. So I, I think it's okay. I think, and, and I don't have any objection. Any other comments or revisions to the minutes? All right. Um, with that amendment, can I see a show of hands for approving the minutes as amended? Raise your hands, please, if you are okay with the minutes being, all right, thank you so much. Minutes are um accepted with that amendment. And Spencer, I'll give the wording to you at the end of the meeting. Okay. We are heading to the homestretch gang and it's early night. So the next regular meeting of the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board is on Tuesday, October 29th at 7 o'clock at Haha Eone Elementary School Cafeteria and on WebEx. The Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board regular meetings are cable cast on Olelo Channel 49 on the second Monday of the following month at 9:00 PM and repeating on that month's third Friday at 7:00 AM. Videos can also be seen online at www.Olelo.org.Olelo.net or on the Honolulu.gov NCO webpage. I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight. We have all of our board members present tonight for our meeting. So I think that's wonderful and um you enjoy the rest of the month and thank you to our audience who joined us. Meeting is adjourned.